The agenda, there is no public discussion, nor really should there be. Because, uh, this is just, if there's something to discuss here on the, for the public.
Mr. Boyd, is this you calling in from the telephone number?
Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm on the phone and, um, I have my computer on. But I called, um, I called in from my phone. Is that, is that presenting a problem?
No, I was just changing your name so that your phone number wasn't showing there.
Okay. So, yeah, uh, just one, it may cause one problem. And that is, uh, so, is it like, you know, are you using your phone for your audio? No, I'm, you, uh, I'm using, I'm using my computer to read the, uh, you know, to, uh, to read, uh, the papers that we have on there. And I'm using, I use the phone to get online. Oh. So should I just get up, get on the phone and not worry about the papers? Uh...
You're fine.
Yeah, I think you'll be fine.
As long as it works for you, right?
Okay. As lo- as long as we don't get feedback between...
Mm.
Oh, that happens sometimes. Like, uh, when my wife and I are both, uh, on a, on a Zoom meeting and we're in the same room.
Yeah, it, yeah.
Yeah, it gets feedback and echoes and stuff like that. It makes it hard. So as long as there's no mechanical issues. Okay. We, you know, please, if you hear me. Okay. Okay, it's five thirty. Um, actually, it's five thirty-three. So I'm gonna ask, uh, Ruby, a secretary, will you do the roll call?
Uh, oops, hang on. Hang on, my computer all of a sudden... All right, oh my god. Hang on. I can hear you guys, but I'm locked out of my computer. Oh, maybe not. All right. All right, uh, roll call. Uh, Commissioner Boyd?
Here.
Commissioner Karp?
Here.
Commissioner Agustin?
He was here.
He is, he muted. I can see you. Commissioner Gaston? No. Commissioner Pacora? Everybody muted. I can't tell who's...
Well, according to this, we have, uh, I'm, I'm here, I'm sorry, guys, I was muted.
Yes, I can see you.
Okay. Um... I, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't see, uh, uh, either Commissioner Gaston or, uh, Commissioner Pacora on, um, in, in, in the group, right? Through the, the pages?
Right. Cause there's only four of us.
Until they come in. Latrice?
Uh-huh.
Uh... Uh... Okay, you, uh, you, you have no one who's waiting to be admitted, right?
No. I have, um, ten people on the line, um, and, 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 uh, Floyd is on twice. Thirty-nine. So it's the four of you, um, the captioner, Jerry Nagel. Yeah, nope.
I got, I got your... I got your mess, I got your text.
Okay.
They think we need five. I'm not quite sure why we think we need five. We have four, which is, uh, no, actually, we only have, we have four, which is the majority of the, um, well, the commission, why would we need five?
There's still a question on, um, if we need five. Um, the, the Iowa Administrative Procedures Act says that if the ordinance is silent on what constitutes a quorum, you need two-thirds.
You need five.
Two-thirds?
Two-thirds.
And our ordinance is silent. Of what constitutes a quorum?
Something else we indicated that it was four.
Jerry Nagel.
... participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
The Iowa Civil Rights Act says that, um, the Iowa Civil Rights Act also says that you can only remove commissioners if you have cause. Um, and so that's been an argument that's been going on here internally.
Well, two-thirds of seven is four point six 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 six.
Yeah.
Seven, yeah. So if we, yeah, if it is, if we do need two-thirds for the, for this, for this, if, uh, then, um, then we need to have five. If we get a majority, then we have a majority.
Yeah, the seventeen A says two-thirds. If it's silent. And we, um, our ordinance is silent, the only place that it references what constitutes a quorum is for closed session, and that says two-thirds, too. I haven't, um, did anybody hear from, uh, Lee Gaston or Richard Pacora?
Should we give them a call?
I, I don't, does anybody have their contact information?
I'm gonna call Lee now.
What?
I'm gonna call Lee now.
Okay, and, um... Let's see, if I, if I have Pacora's number, I will call him. Sure, I have it.
They maybe have forgotten today's meeting?
It's possible. They may have been worn out from Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna have them resend it to you, okay?
You have...
Yeah, bye-bye. Hey, uh, Lee needs to go to lcgaston@gmail.com. He, he can't find the, uh, which.
Okay.
I can email it to him.
I am sending Rich a text to his email.
Okay. All right, I just sent that to him.
What? Okay. Let us, um... We're, we really can't do anything until one, you know, one of them signs on.
I just sent the link to, um, Lee, so...
Why don't you just for, 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 for good luck's sake, send the link to Richard as well?
All right.
I sent him a text, but it's going to his email because that's all I have is his email. And, um...
Is it R. V. Pacora?
Okay, it is, um...
There you go.
Okay. It's Yahoo. It's R. V. Pacora at Yahoo.
Okay.
I got some, yeah, heard my mic. Not there, so let's try here.
All right. Did that.
Okay.
So Director, uh, Lacy, uh, is, is the five, the number five the magic number that, uh, we have to deal with when we, uh, conversing on a subject that constitutes, uh, no, let me ask the question another way. How many, uh, commissioner, how many commissioners constitute a meeting?
For the open meetings law, if, if you have greater than fifty percent, um, and that could be, um, everybody talking together, or that could be one person going between people talking, so since the number, since we have seven people, it would be four. So let's say I talk to everybody individually, or I talk to four people individually and say, hey, I spoke to, you know, this person, this person, this person, this person. And they all agree to, to do this. Um, I've created an open meeting, so even though you all didn't talk to each other, I spoke to everybody and got consensus on that, so that's creating a conduit for an open meeting. Um, but to have the, um, like, to have the meeting, like, that would be, if I would use council as an example, so if there are six council members who, um, did that, I don't know that you can have a meeting, maybe, maybe Alderman Peepac can tell us. I don't, I don't know that they can have a meeting with six council members, but, uh, having that discussion amongst the six people could create an open meeting violation.
So really, if we're gonna vote on anything, we need to have five? So is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think to, to have the meeting and take action, there's supposed to be five. Just to be safe, because we don't, we're not sure, it doesn't, it, our ordinance is silent of what constitutes a quorum. So the state law clearly says four of seven is a quorum.
I also believe that, uh, according to Robert's Rules of Order, that once a quorum is established, a meeting can continue and hold voting, uh, even if, um, the quorum is lost by people leaving. Uh, unless someone asks for a quorum call.
Got me, I have no idea.
Henry, that's, that, that's correct, though, but, uh, once the meeting starts, once you, uh, establish a quorum, you always have a, a quorum throughout the meeting regardless of who leaves.
Yeah, well, I mean, but, but if, if, uh, if, if, if so many people leave, that it's less than a quorum, if somebody, somebody can ask for a quorum call. And then, and once that's done and it's established, it's not a quorum, you can no longer conduct business. According to Robert's rules. But it's, but, but once you, uh, but, but once you establish a quorum, you can go on till the cows come home, as long as no one calls for it. You see, this Bronx boy's picking up also the Iowa farm idiots.
Till the cows go home.
But the claim was true in Tupelo, Mississippi.
Don't y'all, don't y'all go flat holy today.
You know, for, for most, you know, for some, you know, for, you know, for, I guess, maybe, probably my whole life, I, I would use the phrase, you gotta make hay while the sun shines. And, um, one, one time we were at a, a, uh, a baby naming ceremony, I think it was, at somebody's house here in Iowa, and we had congregant who, who, uh, in, um, across the river, Airport Byron. So it was a beautiful day in the fall, and he says, and, and, and he says to me, I've gotta leave because I gotta make hay, 'cause the sun is shining. I gotta do this while the sun is shining. And I never realized that it was a real thing, you have to make hay while the sun shines.
Uh...
Is Lee on yet?
I, nope. I sent it to Lee and Richard.
I, 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 I sent Richard a text, as I said, which went to his email. So, um, he has and responded to me. Did Lee indicate to you, Michael, that he was gonna get on?
Yes.
Mike, you think you oughta call him again, see if he's responding? Oh, what was that? That was the noise.
He said, uh, he said he got it from Ruby, so... He said, "The ru- the, the one that I got from Ruby, uh, is not working," so, uh...
I sent it to him twice.
He said that the link that you, that you were sending didn't work. I sent him the one that I got and stuff, so, uh... Yeah, we gonna have to, uh, we gonna make sure we get this elsewhere away, guys. Uh, that, that's no reason why four doesn't constitute a majority and stuff, uh, I, I mean, I don't, I don't understand that and stuff, and...
It's, it, it is a majority, but I don't know if it constitutes a quorum and, um, for a regular meeting, but especially not, um, one where we're deliberating on the...
I just sent you one, too, uh, Lee, did you get that one? Yeah, I sent it to lcgaston@gmail.com. It's in a, it's in a PDF format, but if you click on that link, it'll let you in. Uh, what's the password? You may be, you may be...
It's their password.
Okay.
So he has to go down to not the host?
Yeah, go down...
Make sure, make sure you don't log in as the host, okay?
Just scroll down.
Okay, I, I, I didn't think you had it, but, you know, you, you got a lot of quarterbacks, wouldn't you?
Okay.
Yep, uh, we, we, we need to do the name for a quorum.
Tom, the promise is not gonna be long.
Uh, Rabbi Cop said he's not gonna keep you no longer than about three hours. I'm just, I'm just kidding, man. He's not, he said it's not gonna be long.
We can all go out to dinner after.
Virtual dinner. If you look at a screen, if you're really hungry.
Okay. I don't know why it's, I don't know why it's doing you like, uh... No, uh, I just clicked on it and, uh, it came up, uh... When the truck came up, it asked, uh, if you would be, uh, host, so click one area, if you wasn't the host, uh, to click down below if you were the participant. Latrice, can you send us just a regular link, open link outside of the, uh...
PDF.
The, uh...
Outside of the agenda?
Yeah, I'll email it to him.
Okay. 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 Uh, well, I'm at, I'm at one fifteen, calling the drive-in. Yeah, about another ten minutes, uh, he's gonna come over here and join the call from here. He still, it was asking him for a pass code, so... He said he's never done that before, so I don't know what's going on with him, so...
Did he, did he not, I sent him the link to it with the password in it. Did he not get the email? You wanna maybe put him on, on a speakerphone through your phone?
Is he up, but I, you have him on a landline, is he on a landline or a cell phone?
Lee.
For our guests, as long as we're waiting, for our guests, just to make it clear, tonight this is a special meeting to discuss a housing case which came to us before, actually came to, uh, the former commission back in, I think, 2015. And, um, has gone through the court system, uh, to the district court and, uh, the district court, and then to the Supreme Court. And there is an issue that, uh, from the decision of the district court, which, uh, remanded the case back to, uh, the commission. Uh, actually, there was a, uh, a settlement for damages and then actually first it went to, uh, an administrative, uh, law judge for a hearing. And the administrative law judge decided in favor of the complainant and awarded a significant amount of money for hearing for damages. And, uh, the commission reduced the amount awarded for damages and the case was appealed, uh, to the district court and then to the Supreme Court. The district court, the district court didn't understand why the commission lowered the amount for damages and, uh, and would left, and questioned that. The Supreme Court did not even deal with that part of the, of the decision and only dealt with another part which, uh, involved attorney's fees. So, this court, this has now been remanded back to us, uh, to, uh, address the issue of why the, uh, the commission reduced the amount of damages or what the grounds of which the commission reduced the amount of damages. So that that's what, you know, that's the case. And Latrice, have I got that right? Latrice?
Sorry, yes, I had to unmute, um... Yeah, the case went to, um, the US Supreme Court, um, they declined to take it. Um, but yeah, it went through the district courts, um, it went through the Court of Appeals and the Iowa Supreme Court. The issue, um, with the district court was that they did not have a, um, clear understanding of whether the commission decided to reduce the damages because they found the, um, that the administrative law judge decided or awarded the damages based on the termination of tendency and the discriminatory statement or if they reduced them for another reason. So they wanted the, um, commission to issue additional findings of why they made the determination to, um, lessen the award of damages that was recommended by the administrative law judge.
So that's, that's, you know, that's the case that we have in front of us. Uh, we're not go, actually, we're not going to address the case tonight. We have to go through a process that Latrice will, uh, describe to, to the commission once we hit our quorum because it's important that, uh, that, uh, as many commissioners as possible understand what's, what's to be done and how you're gonna go about doing it. And then we'll have one, we'll have one issue of whether or not we should vote on it or not and, uh, uh, we'll get to that when we get to that. So I just wanted to make all our guests aware of, um, what's gonna transpire here. This one's supposed to be short feeding.
I guess maybe we could ask, does everybody understand, um, what the issue was with the, um, the difference between the, uh, damages award being based on the discriminatory statement and the termination of tendency?
You said being based on discriminatory. Say that again.
Um, whether the damages was based on the discriminatory statement or the termination of tendency or both?
I, I think that, you know, uh, that will be made, I think that will be made clear. Latrice, when we get here and you go through the process and you describe, uh, what's it called, Miller Murphy's rule, law?
Mrs. Murphy.
What? Mr. Murphy?
Mrs. Murphy. So there was a, um, discussion on the floor of Congress, um, and a hypothetical landlord, Mrs. Murphy, was mentioned, um, and, um, so that's what it's referred to as, just small landlords are referred to as Mrs. Murphy landlords.
Okay, so you'll describe that, when we get, when we get Lee and we go through the process, I think, you'll, you'll, you'll explain what the, what that ruling was and 'cause it plays a part in, uh, the, this, this, this decision, maybe not, maybe, maybe not when it was at the, um, civil rights commission level, but, you know, that is a, it is an issue.
Is Lee driving to Michael's house or...?
That's what he's doing, yeah, he's driving, right, Mike? He's not walking.
Uh, yes, that is correct, uh, on the drive. He said it would take about ten minutes, so...
Hopefully that's it.
Okay.
(laughing)
All right. Mike went to get his mask and then we'll be in business.
Okay.
What happened is, I just got the light. Okay, Lee's here. Lee's here, we have a quorum.
There you go.
Okay, so the first thing is vote to approve the agenda, which is on the screen, uh, and do I have a, a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Okay. Okay, and, um, Ethel, you seconded?
Yes, I did.
All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Good. Okay. Now, as I, I said earlier, we're here tonight to discuss, uh, housing, a housing issue, a, uh, potential, a future hearing of, uh, it's H-0123002614. And I've asked Latrice to kind of walk us through what the process is because I don't think that any of us have gone through this process with the, with this commission before. So we need to get a, an orientation, okay? Latrice? Whenever you're...
Alrighty, so, um, when cases go through public hearings, uh, the commission issues that final agency action and the parties, if they don't agree with the decision, can appeal to the district court. In this case, the commission, uh, the administrative law judge held the hearing, she issued her proposed finding, um, that came back to the commission and the commission decided to amend her findings to reduce the amount of damages that she had proposed. Uh, the original amount was thirty-five thousand dollars, um, and, um, the commission reduced that to seventeen thousand five hundred after they, uh, reviewed the case. And the, um, respondent appealed that ruling to district court. Um, the, oh, I'm leaving something out, the complainant's attorney also petitioned the commission for, um, attorney's fees, for an award of attorney's fees and so, um, there was also a, um, an award of attorney's fees for the complainant's attorney. And the respondent appealed that to the district court. The district court found that, um, there was no basis for reversing the commission's decision on liability, you know, because the respondent did make discriminatory statements based on familial status of the complainant and that would violate our ordinance. Um, but they reversed the commission's damage award and assessment of civil penalties and they remanded it back to the commission for them to issue additional findings on the record, um, that was already made so that, uh, they could explain why they reduced those damages. Um, and they reversed the commission's award of attorney's fees. Um, they were citing a lack of express language which is, uh, within section three of the Davenport Civil Rights Ordinance, which is the portion that has, um, the explanation of fair housing things within it. Um, and that allowed the award of attorney's fees during the administrative process. Something happened while the ordinance was being approved where it, I, um, I think they were attempting to copy the Fair Housing, the Federal Fair Housing Act verbatim, but it, um, the, our ordinance is section weird and so it looks like there are two different sections relating to, uh, the administrative hearing and the appellate process, uh, as far as awarding attorney's fees. And that's explained in some of the briefs that are within the file that you have. Um, so the commission and the complainant requested an enlargement of the initial, uh, district court decision, um, because it did not address, um, the, um, portion of the ordinance that the, that the attorney's fees were actually awarded under. And then it went to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals reversed the district court decision in part and affirmed it in part. So they, um, affirmed the denial of the respondent's request for attorney's fees, um, and they reinstated the complainant's attorney's fees. And they reinstated the, uh, damages award that the commission awarded. So the respondent then appealed to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court didn't address the liability issue, the Iowa Supreme Court, they only addressed the, um, complainant's attorney's fees. So they reversed, um, the complainant's attorney's fees again, um, but they left the rest of the decision intact and then the respondent appealed to the US Supreme Court. Uh, the US Supreme Court denied per se, so then it bounced back to state court and then it bounced back to the commission to issue those, um, additional findings that they were initially asked to issue pursuant to the district court decision.
So now we have to, you know, now, what, we have to present to the district court...
No.
...behind the, um, the decision to reduce the damages fees.
No, the, so the commissioners, um, are, they, you all basically service judges, so you have, you're quasi judicial officials, so you have the authority to issue binding, legal findings. So you all can't, um, are expected to issue an addition, a finding explaining, um, why the, why the damage reward was, damage award was reduced. Uh, so basically explaining whether it was reduced because the commission thought that the hearing officer, um, awarded damages based on both the discriminatory statement and the termination of tendency or they just thought it was too high or, you know, whatever reason the commission had for reducing the damages, the, uh, they are supposed to issue an additional finding explaining that. That doesn't go back to the district court, that's just the commission's additional findings are, are, they are what they are, um, and if the parties want to appeal that again... Um, and if the parties want to appeal that again, I guess that option is there, but the commission's findings are the final agency action there.
Okay, now, is it possible for us, is it possible for us to decide to reduce the whole damages that, um, the, uh, administrative law judge, uh?
I, it was, the remand was for additional findings on the damages. Um... I, I think they're just supposed to be explaining why the decision was made to change the hearing officer's proposal.
All right, so now the, you know, the, obviously, the first problem is, you know, that was a closed me- uh, hearing and, uh, by law, Latrice was not part of that hearing, so we have, you know, so that, uh, none of us were in that, in that, in that, uh, discussion between, um, between, you know, between the members of the commission, that led to the decision to reduce that, those damages. And we are in the process of trying to locate the records of that closed meeting. The notes from that closed meeting, the recording of that closed meeting. Uh, soon we would, you know, the, the only way that we could answer that question is if we could find out, if we could, uh, hear, read or hear what that discussion, what discussion led up to that decision. Am I correct, Latrice?
Uh, yeah, uh, yes, we're, I just thought someone was checking with these clerks to see if they still have the records. I don't, we haven't received any notice in the office that it has been destroyed. Um, usually, we send over our archives to the library and before they destroy anything, they send us over a list of items that are going to be destroyed and then we could say, no, we need that, or, you know, they could-
Yeah.
-go ahead and destroy them.
Um, I actually called the, uh, city clerk yesterday, uh, is it yesterday or the other day?
Yeah, I think it was yesterday.
(laughing) Can't remember, but I spoke with him yesterday and, um, he said that, uh, any of the commission's cases, or, they don't have any of the commission's cases. They said the commission keeps their own recordings and notes about any cases that they, you know, that they, uh, dis- try or discuss. And so they said, um, if, you know, we need to, if we need to, uh, go back to any of the Civil Rights Commission cases, it would be in the civil rights office.
No, that was taken up to the clerk's office, it was given to the former clerk, Jackie Polatrac.
Oh, but that's what I was told.
Well, yeah, I, I, obviously, we need to reapproach the clerk. And, uh, Latrice, if you could get, uh, if you could provide us with the, uh, the actual information about how that-
The date when it happened? I don't, I, um, I would assume that the, well, I don't know if they gave it, if the chair gave it to Beth to take upstairs or if he took it directly upstairs, it definitely went upstairs to, uh, the city clerk's office. Um, and I, I think I recall him taking it upstairs to the city clerk's office, so I would assume if they don't have it, that means that they destroyed it.
Was, was, was he the chair at the time?
Uh, no, that was Tim Hart.
Oh, Tim Hart, right, Tim Hart was the chair and Tim Hart, God bless his soul, is no longer with us. Um, I think, you know, I, I think we, we, uh, we need to revisit the clerk. Uh, maybe, yeah, and Latrice, maybe you need to find out whether that's kind of sitting in a corner somewhere in the office.
No, it isn't, we haven't, we, um, our former employee who, um, managed that file hasn't notated that it went up to the clerk's office.
Wait, do we have that documentation?
Yeah, do we have that?
Uh, the note there, yeah, is there in the file.
Yeah, it is, yeah, there was a note in the file, I saw something about clerks, yeah, in the file, it's in the, I, I thought, well, yeah, I, I saw something with a receipt.
Oh.
Yeah, so maybe-
I'll have to find it.
And that's, yeah, the file is a lot of stuff we have to go through. And so, uh, it's, do you have any idea whi- which section of the file that's in? Because I was looking through all the sections in the file today, yesterday, yeah, for stuff.
I'm, I'm not sure if it's in the filed copy that you have, it's just, uh, she, she just keeps records of everything, so that would just be like an internal note for the, for her as the investigator of, you know, what happened with it.
Is, is there a way that I could, so I can approach the city clerk again? I don't know, take a picture of the note? Or the date? Or if there, if there's a receipt by?
Uh, we wouldn't have that, because we don't take it up there, so it's there just a notation of, of that it went there. So I can send over that.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, we need to have, we need to have some, something material that we can check.
I'm gonna assume that they destroyed it, (laugh) because if, if they don't have it, um, yeah, I'm gonna assume that they, that they destroyed it, um, because there, yeah, there have been, um, other, um, closed session recordings that have been taken up to the clerk's office too, so if they say they don't have any, I would assume that means that they destroyed it.
Well, and, and I, on the other hand, am gonna assume that, uh, that the person that Ruby talked to just made an assumption and didn't really check to find out. So, I, yeah, I wanna, you know, I want to show them some sort of evidence that it was, you know, turned over to them, so that it should send a say, oh, we don't have anything, go away, that they have to actually look to see if they have. You know, so if you could send over, uh, what, whatever documentation we have about it going up to the clerk's office, I think, yeah, I would appreciate it, so that the clerk's office can be reapproached about it.
Okay.
Uh, the next issue is that, um, in order for us to reopen this hearing, uh, we have to, if there's a stay on it, when it was going up to the, to the courts, we have to lift the stay, us, you know, to, to make this hearing again, you know, this case to get active for us. However, if, if we, if we vote to lift the stay, like if we voted tonight to lift the stay, the clock starts ticking, there's thirty days. And when we, when we lift the stay, we have to, we, we, we have to contact both, uh, both authorities, that if they have any additional information or material that they wish to present to the commission for its hearing, uh, and if they wish to attend the hearing and make statements in person, all of that, if they, you know, that, they, they, they need to let us know and they can do that. But, um, uh, before we start the clock ticking, we should have, A, hopefully, find that record of, uh, of what transpired with the, with that commission. Uh, so that we know why they did what they did. Um, and if not, if we can't find it, then we have to discuss how, you know, how do we go from here? Because we cannot speak for another commission as to what their thinking was when we have, when we don't have that. So how do we, you know, how do we approach responding to the request, to the, you know, that led to the remand and, you know, to back to the commission? Is that, is that, is that correct, Latrice?
I'm not, um, sure what happens if, if we don't have it and I have raised this issue several times without trying to remove all of the commissioners when we have this case pending, because it was remanded back for those additional findings.
So, my recommendation is that we not lift the stay until we have some answers about the proceedings that took place in closed session of this case, with the commission. Back in, it was two thousand fifteen, wasn't it? You know, I think, I know the case started two thousand fourteen, but I think the, you know, the hearing was probably in two thousand fifteen. Am I right, Latrice?
I am very senile, so I don't know the exact date of the hearing. I, I know this is a two thousand fifteen case, but I don't know the date of the hearing, or it's a two thousand fourteen case, I don't know the, the date of the hearing. I see that the stay was issued September twenty-ninth, two thousand sixty, but that could have been after the district court decision.
Yeah, that's- So, let's, let's discuss it.
I think what you said sounds logical, so that, uh, because, you know, we, we leave that time. So that sounds, uh, that sounds good to me.
Thank you, Ethel, any other comments on, on it?
Well, I think, you know, once we get that proof that it was sent to the city clerk's office, I can reach back out to the city clerk and say, this is what I have. And then we'll find out if they've destroyed it or not.
They shouldn't, should they not have a record of having destroyed it?
Don't they have to ask you, Latrice, that they're gonna destroy, like, documents from civil rights case?
They, they don't have to ask you, but I would think that they would notify our office before they did that. And there, like I said, I know for sure that there were other closed session recordings that were taken up to the clerk's office, so, um, if they don't have any, then that means that, yeah, they are destroying them and we're not being notified of it before they are destroyed.
Are we, are we re- you know, are we ready to vote on not lifting the stay?
And I would say, I don't know what their policy is on how they do the records retention. All I know is what the library does and what they do is, when we send over things to them for archive, they send us over a list of what's destroyed, so there's a time period where it has to be maintained and then once they exceed that time period, they'll send us a list and say, hey, we're gonna destroy these items, do you need any of them before they're destroyed? And then they have a list of what they've destroyed and we have a list of what they, they've destroyed.
Uh, let me ask you, do you know what that timeframe is? How, how long do they hold something before they destroy it?
So for closed session, under the, um, statute, you have to hold it for a year?
Hold that seat?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Hey, hey, this, uh-
Yes?
...light, and, uh, it would appear to be that, uh, it would be almost illegal. And I know it's probably not to, uh, to destroy file on an active case that has not been, uh, disposed of. And it just doesn't make sense that these people over in the city would even, uh, do something of that nature. We're checking with the store for, uh, for that document. Definitely, uh, on the night of, uh, whether or not we should, uh, open the clock up on this, uh, I agree with what she said, you need to find out where the file, uh, is located, if it is available, and then we can make a decision when we're at, uh-
Thank you, Mike, thank you. Thank you, Ruby, for your input. So, you know, can, can we vote not to, to lift the stay?
Some move, I support it.
Okay, we, you know, uh, we have a fir-, we have, you know, we have a motion not to lift the stay and a second until we, uh, you know, get better handle on where the records of that closed session, because of that closed session are, and we have them in our hands. Uh, all in favor, say aye, the rec- hand?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, okay, the ayes above the nos. Um, so we have, uh, you know, we're unanimous. Uh, and, um, we will, we will postpone scheduling another special meeting for this, for this issue until we have some answers. Uh, are we all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I don't think we need to vote on that, I think kind of is, um, self-evident. Is there, is there any other discussion? Then thank you, Lee, for driving over the mics and making the call.
It, it wants to know where, where you're taking off the bill.
(laughing)
All right. So I got sorry, you're such nuts.
It's, it's okay, as long as you, and I want to thank all those who, uh, are sitting in on the, the special meeting. Uh, I'm sure you were greatly excited by, by our discussion. And, uh, then I move, yeah, someone want to move for adjournment?
Move that we adjourn.
All in- Second, all in favor, say aye.
Six thirty.
Aye.
Okay, then if you haven't already had dinner before the meeting, you may have dinner. (laughing)
What a grace of hope.
Yes, thank you, folks, for attending and, uh, we move forward with this process.
All right, goodnight.
Latrice, for so, for offering so much help on, on figuring out what the heck's going on here, okay?
Okay.
All right, goodnight, everyone.
Goodnight, everyone.
Goodnight. Hey, Carol, I'll just turn that one.
Goodbye.